All right, it is seven o'clock. This is the regular city council meeting for Minatrista for February 20th. First order, welcome everyone. Big audience tonight. And so just a reminder for all of us, if you don't have your phones on airplane mode or on silent, please do so, so they don't interrupt us. And also welcome to those that might be watching on YouTube later on. So first, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will start with introductions. I'm going to start at that in this time. We have our Director of Administration, Cassandra Tabor. Tonight, we are absent is Chris Lindquist. She's on vacation. She's our city clerk, so I believe Ms. Tabor will be filling in for her. Good luck with that. And next, we have Mr. Paul Hornby with WSB, our city engineer. And then we have council members Shannon Bruce, Mike Molliter, Patricia Thole, Pam Mortensen. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my right are Mike Barone, our city administrator, Brian Grimm, our finance director, David Abel, our community development director, and Andrew Biggerstaff, who is sitting for our normal, regular, normal attorney, not even normal too, but our regular attorney, Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven. Again, welcome, Mr. Biggerstaff. And then on the end, we have our Chief of Police, Paul Falls. So with that, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, Ms. Thole made that motion, and Mr. Molliter seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So first, we're going to start out with a special presentation, and this is, Mr. Barone will do this for us, I believe.
Yes, you are correct, Mayor.
And we'll have a discussion on professional services discussion.
And Mayor, if you don't mind passing those to everybody, Cassandra, there's one for you for the record, and we'll send these this way. If I can throw them just enough. I'll wait till those get distributed before I begin. If you could throw on the overhead. That's kind of big, so if you want to zoom in. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm going to go through a discussion on professional services at the City of Minatrista. For a few council members, they'll recall that I actually did this presentation in April of 2016. I've had a chance to look at it again and kind of freshen it up and bring it back for you tonight, because we did have another request in January to kind of take another look at this. And I'll go through this data here eventually, but I did survey 16 cities, mostly in the west metro area that are neighbors of ours, and to assess what they currently have for both attorney and engineering, and we'll go through that. But at first, the parameters that you need to understand is that under state statute, they have some kind of contract value levels that dictate when and how you should look for professional services or any other kind of service or thing that you want to put out there for bid or quotes. Under $25,000, cities have the option to just obtain quotes, or you can just buy stuff on the open market, and that's for anything, including services, goods and services. And then when you go between $25,000 and $100,000, you need to have a competitive bidding process. It's not required, but you can do that, or you can opt to directly negotiate. But once you get above $100,000 and up, there's a competitive bidding process that is required. And so that's the grid that you see on page one of your presentation, and also up on the overhead here. But if you scroll down, David, as most people know, professional services generally cost, especially in a city our size, over $100,000. But there is a caveat and an exemption, an exception, for professional services, and it reads as follows. So cities are not required to follow the competitive bidding process when contracting for professional services, such as those provided by doctors, engineers, lawyers, architects, accountants, as well as other services requiring technical, scientific, or professional training. And they do this for a reason, because doing an RFP process even every year or every five years is quite expensive, and cities in general will take advantage of the fact that we don't have to go out to do that, because we save time, we save money, and we save a lot of effort on our behalf as we procure those services. There are some hidden costs to that, as I dictated that, and that, those could be quite large at times, essentially when, these days, finances are quite limited for municipalities in general. As mentioned, the RFP process can be time-consuming, but a lot of people argue, well, if you go out for bid, you're going to get a better price. And you'll be able to look at some of the survey data I have, and I also have them near the back of this presentation. I've got some survey, or I've surveyed some of the local engineering firms, and, you know, some are higher in one and lower in another, but in general, they're all fairly similar. And so I think if you say, you know, we're going to go out for an RFP, and we might end up with SEH or Bolton and Mank instead of WSB, I don't think it would be for monetary reasons.
Can I ask you a question about that? Because you're saying they're all basically similar.
They are very similar.
And I agree, they probably are, because they're giving you ranges of rates, and you cannot compare ranges of rates when you're looking at different vendors, because depending on who's doing the work, they charge towards the upper end or the lower end, based on who's doing the work.
Yep.
And it is absolutely impossible to compare them.
Correct.
So when three different engineering companies give you ranges of rates, you could have wildly different numbers come in on a project that, because they're all using the same range, but those bids could be, you could be spending a wildly different number based on who they assign to which project. So you can't compare what you've done, you can't make a comparison between these engineering companies.
I think you can, Mayor and Council. I think when you look at the ranges, you can guesstimate, estimate, however you want to say that, what it's going to cost you for any particular project. And I guess the, what I'm trying to say is that if you have a different engineering firm, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get a different or better price. You could get a worse price. Just depends on how busy that particular firm is, what capacity they have at the time your projects are going out, who the particular engineer or technician or whoever, like I have a list of the job descriptions that I thought applied best to Minatrista, based on our fee schedule when we approve it from WSB. So yeah, costs could vary from year to year, or project to project, but in general, you're going to get kind of a whole gamut of costs, whether it's for a professional engineer or technician or whatever it might be, that I think over time tend to average out. I don't think that there's a quote "monetary" way to save money by switching firms. It's kind of my bottom line.
And I haven't.
Okay, just hold on a second. Why don't we let him, write your questions down.
Well, I'd like to address them as they come up, because once you get to the end, it's, I'm not advocating, I'm not saying that we have to change engineering firms.
Right.
I think WSB is a very competent firm, but there is such a thing as competition in the marketplace, and I think businesses tend to charge as much as they possibly can in a competitive marketplace, but it's that competition that keeps those prices in check. And without competition, prices rise, and when you don't do an RFP and you have no competition in this marketplace for 13 years, prices are going to go up. And there's.
I think that's what his, I think that's what he's pointing out, and that's why I'm saying, let him finish his presentation, because I think some of those questions might be flushed out. And write your questions down, write your comments down, and then at the end, we're all going to discuss it.
Sure. Thank you. So I'd like to talk a little bit about our two professional services that we have, and I'll go through, if you want to roll up, and I think the first one should be attorney. And we can zoom in and out of that if anybody, I guess there's nobody in the audience to look at it, but, unless you want to look at it.
Oh, it's hard for us to see, though.
Yeah, I know, it's nothing. But it's in your packet, in the last couple of pages, I printed those, so.
Okay.
So if you go through the civil attorney services, I did look, survey 16 cities that surround our city, Corcoran, Delano, and all the way down to Wayzata Woodlands, so they're alphabetical after us at the top. Greenfield, for their civil attorney, they had Carson, Cleland, and Schrader prior to RFP process that they did a number of years ago, and then after their process, they ended up staying with that particular firm. In Victoria, they had a attorney named Mike Nordine, who retired in 2014. They did an RFP there. They kept Kennedy and Graven, but they ended up with Bob Vos as their city attorney in Victoria. Shorewood did an RFP process a few years back, in 2008, and they were fairly dissatisfied with that outcome, and so they went back to their original attorney vendor, which is Kootag Rock. And then the only one I did hear recently is I think Minnetoka Beach is going to start looking for, if they haven't already, for a new city attorney, and I believe that's because their Lindquist and Venom attorney either retired, or the particular firm of Lindquist and Venom got bought out, or both, some combination of those. So there's not a lot of changes in city attorneys over the years in our cities, including I'll move on to the engineering services, and again, there are 16 cities, and I saw just one in the last six years that has done an RFP process, and that would be in Greenfield. They were somewhat dissatisfied with their engineering firm, and that prompted their process, and they ended up hiring a new firm in a group called Hawkinson Anderson. City of Medina did change engineering firms in 2012, but that was generally triggered by a man named Mr. Tom Kellogg. Mr. Kellogg was with Bonestro, and he left Bonestro to go to WSB, and they just decided to stay with Mr. Kellogg, so they switched to WSB in order to do that. And they did not do an RFP process for that process, for that particular, for that particular area. There's only one city that has an actual city engineer on staff, and that's at the City of Wayzata. And I did have a chance to talk with Jeff Dahl, their city manager, recently, and I asked him, you know, how much engineering does your city engineer actually do? And he said, he probably does, probably maybe a fourth or a third of his job is true engineering work. Part of his title is also Assistant Public Works Director, so he ends up spending a lot of time managing the public works area. And I use this phrase, and he wasn't, he was fine with the phrase, but I kind of likened his engineer, no, nothing against their engineer, I'm sure he's a fine engineer, but he's sort of like a traffic cop, so he, he ends up kind of managing a lot of things, and if they have anything on their CIP that requires engineering services, they go out and contract for that work. A few details on our attorney services. I listed all the people that I'm aware of, since I've been here, that I've worked with, Ron Beatty, Andrew, and before Andrew, Sarah as the backup, Mary Techen, Bob Vos, Doug Shaftel, and Jim Straumann. And I gave a few examples of, at the bottom of that page, about when we've worked with each of those. Mary Techen is their HR attorney, and so I know Cassandra and I have talked with her over the years, and even before that, to deal with HR issues. When we have right-of-way issues, especially when we're working on the Hallstead project or easement acquisition on the Water Main project, we use Doug Shaftel. When we finished up the water treatment project, we had our mediation with Knudsen, and Jim Straumann was the attorney for that. And then we've had some telecommunication issues over the year, whether it's been a wireless vendor, or people trying to upgrade equipment on city water towers, or when we were going through our cable franchise thing, we worked with Bob Vos, that's his expertise area. Having a single attorney in-house, I guarantee you, we would not have the expertise as we do with Kennedy and Graven, and that doesn't cover things like when they're sick or on vacation, or if they happen to quit, and we've got a gap, or we've got to go find another city attorney. Moving on to the engineering services, we've had WSB since 2005. I never met Mr. Hutton, but he worked from '05 to '09. I did know Mark Erickson, he was here from 2009 to 14, and then Paul Hornby's been here since 2014. We've also worked with Katie Kozlak, Nick Williams, Matt Havlick, Joe Holman, John Mackowitz, and you can see the rest of the names there. We've worked on the street utility things. Katie and Nick have assisted Paul on those topics. Matt Havlick and Joe Holman, they're generally the folks that are out in the field, and they're reporting back to those engineers on the projects that are going on. John Mackowitz, probably nobody here has ever met him, that's on city council, but we see him a little less often these days, but he'll, but we, all our GIS stuff is coordinated with John Mackowitz at WSB. Comprehensive guy and plan, those that have worked on that especially, and our planning staff, you know Brienne, who used to actually work here, and Eric Swaber. For the swamp project, we worked with Bill Alms, and the MS4 and other water and wastewater stuff, we worked with Paul Johnson. So again, another in-house engineer is not going to have those kind of expertise in all those areas, and again, the whole idea of having a vacation sick or possible transition time coverage would be, would be difficult. Now, the last time I presented this, we didn't really get questioned about in-house engineering services, but that has come up recently, and after talking with Mr. Hornby for a little bit, I was asking him, you know, salary. I kind of guessed, but he confirmed that, you know, you're going to be in the high eighties and low hundreds for a full-time engineer. Again, I think our engineer wouldn't be much different than the one in Wayzata, where they'd be sort of that traffic cop, where they'd be reviewing things, maybe plan review, a few other things, but, you know, we'd still be contracting out for those services. You're probably going to have to pay a full benefit package. And I also know that, you know, our front desk personnel, we've got two of them in Dawn and Anisha, their, their time is carved up pretty tight these days between working with building inspections and public works and finance and things of that nature, and there's just no capacity right now for, for them to pick up any additional support duties for a city engineer. So I would envision us at least a half-time, a 0.5 FTE, full-time equivalent person, so we could maybe avoid the benefits, but there could be the possibility of adding another full-time staff person. And then, you know, you're going to have to come up with some equipment and design software, and some of that stuff's not very inexpensive. So overall, you know, those to me seem like pretty big barriers. You're probably looking at $150,000 to $200,000 to kind of get that on board, if that's the route you wanted to go. I did include, like I said earlier, the contracted engineering fees based on title. I used our city's fee schedule that Paul Hornby and WSB provide, and looked for similar positions, and those other firms, both in Bolton and Mank and WSB. I could have had a list of three or four times this, but those were the primary ones that this city focuses on, so I compared just those only. I could have had a lot of other stuff on here, surveyors and stuff like that, but I did have the one surveyor. And I got those from our neighboring cities of Mound, and just SEH, since we've worked with them as well. And then one of the other things I'll touch on in the summary is that, you know, we've had, you know, longstanding relationship with these two firms, both engineer and attorney. And I can't quantify this for you, but I know they probably could if we asked them. We'll generally go over what the kind of standard amount is, the retainer, however you want to phrase that. With them, probably on a pretty regular basis, they've had to eat some costs, and it's not that they want to do that, but they understand that, you know, if they tried to stick it to us every time that they went over on this or that, that, you know, we might tire of that kind of pricing and et cetera. So they've been, you know, I would say generally very easy to work with, as far as the give and take on issues. We've had billing issues with both over the years, and we've been able to rectify them, but not to say it wouldn't happen again, but in general, you know, I think we more than get our money's worth. And as I did back in two years ago, I mean, I asked myself the same question, am I dissatisfied or is our staff members dissatisfied with our current vendors? If I felt as if we were, like a couple of cities were with their particular vendor, based on performance, I would absolutely come to this council and say, I think we should go out for an RFP on this, but I just don't see that. We work with these folks. I know you folks don't, but we work with them almost on a daily basis, not quite, but pretty close. And so in general, it's, it's my recommendation, once again, as I did a couple of years ago, to say, I don't think it's worth our time, our money, or our effort to go out and look at an RFP process. I understand what council member Bruce was talking about with competition kind of fueling good, good pricing structure, but it's, it's a little bit different with these professional services, because you need to establish those longstanding relationships in order to have that history, and they end up saving you money. If you have a new firm, you're going to be trying to explain to them what we did when we did our Water Main project, and what we did when we did our, our road project, and things of that nature. So I think it's been a very symbiotic relationship with our professional services. I just don't see the value right now to spending city staff time to try to find somebody different for those particular areas, so I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might ask.
Ms. Bruce?
And I'd like to emphasize that this process doesn't need to result in a change of firms. We could, this process is just going to make the pricing competitive, and I'd like to take.
I'd like to ask a question of you. You say this process.
I didn't even finish a sentence. Can I please just finish a sentence? I'd, I'd like to take the attorneys off the table, because we haven't seen, I think this last year was the first time in five years that they've increased their costs. So I, I don't think that's an issue. I don't think anyone thinks Kennedy and Graven is an issue. And when you said you're thinking about dissatis, if you're dissatisfied with our service, it's not based on performance. I'm talking about costs. I am not implying that anyone hasn't done their job or done it well. I think WSB is an excellent engineering firm. I think Kennedy and Graven is an excellent law firm, but there is such a thing as competition in the marketplace. And I'd like to know, you've listed all these cities, and that they hadn't done an RFP in five years, but how many of them have not had any competition for 13 years?
Many of them.
I'd like to know that.
All of them.
Yeah.
Pretty much all of them. So my question to you is.
But just because somebody else is doing something, doesn't mean that it's right.
We're not saying that. So my question to you is, you keep inferring that there'll be competitive pricing. Can you explain why you feel that way, and why you feel that we'll get a better price?
Yes. I, I, did you, did you get the emails from Mr. Wigan and Mr. Notch?
Yeah.
They, they outlined, and, and Bob Christians, who was a council member previously, has talked, has told me about projects that were bid, that we had other bidders come in, and they bid less than WSB. I've complained about the pricing that I've seen for clerical services, that are, I believe are, are too high. And the other, the other matter is that when you have a company that's proposing projects, and then doing the feasibility study on those projects, and then doing the competitive bidding on those projects, and then managing those projects, there's an inherent conflict of interest built into that process. And again, I'm not, I'm not alleging that anything unethical is going on, I'm just saying that there, we need to, we, we're obligated to the residents of Minatrista to make sure that we're providing competitive rates for things that we're paying for, and we, when we pay, over, some years, we pay over $1 million to WSB, we need to take a look at those costs, I would, I would guess, at least every 10 years. And I was, I was shocked when I found out that it's been 13 years, and we've never even done an RFP for legal services. And I'm not suggesting that we should, because I'm not, I haven't seen.
We have done RFPs for legal services, yep.
It's been quite a while.
It's been a while, but we have.
But I think your, your conversation about costs, I think if you're getting your information from Mr. Notch, you're not getting the, the context of the story.
It's not just Mr. Notch. It's the previous council, other previous council members.
And I, and I would say the same exact quote, I think you're not getting the context, because a lot of the money that they attribute going to WSB doesn't truly go to WSB. It's a pass-through. I mean, there's a lot of things that we pay them to pay others, so the net effect that what's being paid to WSB is not truly the $1 million, it's just not.
Not from the city.
Not from the city.
Right, that's right.
There's developers and stuff.
Developers and so on.
It's for, yeah, there's different sources of it. Mr. Molliter, an email asked those same questions, and he sent that email to both myself and Mr. Grimm, and I don't know if Mr. Grimm wants to chime in now or not, but he certainly can, but, you know, those aren't true payables.
From the city.
From the city to WSB. Yeah, the, the question was asked in the, in the request by Mr. Notch about how much did the city pay for engineering services is just a total. It doesn't really give you the full context of what that full represents. So to say that we put $1 million in WSB's pocket is incorrect.
Well, and I would, if I could just jump in briefly, I would say that, yes, that's a, that's a lot of money that goes to an engineering firm, but I would imagine that most cities, a good portion of their budget goes to the engineering firm. I mean, a lot of what we do as a city is, involves engineering, so.
Well, and I, I guess you haven't quite answered the question, but that's okay, because when I said, what makes you feel that competitive pricing would occur if you go out for RFPs, your response was based on what Mr. Wigan and Mr. Notch said in their emails.
No, that's not, I didn't say that.
Okay, and so when I look at these, these rates, and again, our city with the depth of services that we need for, to meet our needs, you're, you're looking at a larger engineering firm, such as SEH, Bolton and Mank, WSB, and a number of others, and I'm looking at their price ranges, and whether you get exact or not, they're right in the ballpark, little bit low, little bit high, right in there, with all the other major engineering firms, ones that we would have to consider. I'd also say that, you know, we get a big, we get a lot of bang for our buck, because I know for a fact that one, the continuity plays a big part in it, and I also know that service and quality of service plays another big part of it, and I know that when I call Kennedy and Graven, Ron Beatty, or, or Andrew Biggerstaff, or Paul Hornby, they call me right back. They get back to me with the information that I, that we need, that I need. The other thing is, with these two firms, they've been here, not only do we have continuity, but we know what we're getting. And I do know from being on the council for many years in the past, prior to these individuals being on board, we weren't getting the, the service that we're currently getting, and so some changes were made. And so I'm saying, hey, if we know what we're getting, we know we're right in the ballpark in terms of pricing, I'm just not, we have the depth of staff with these firms that we need, we get good service, we get professional service, I'm just not certain that it even makes sense to go out, because now we're going to be spending a lot of money and a lot of staff time to go out for RFPs, and then we don't even know what we're going to get. That's kind of where I'm coming from, and I understand what you're saying, Ms. Bruce, but I beg to differ, so.
And you asked me a question of why I thought we might get competitive rates. And I run a business, my husband and I run a business, and we charge as much as the market will bear.
Sure.
Because that's what businesses do. And because there's competition out there, we can't raise our rates past a certain point, or people will lose customers. So that's why we're going to get better rates. If we do an RFP and have other firms respond, not with ranges, but with specific rates for specific tasks, not ranges that they can all come in at the same range and say that we all charge the same thing, and then when you actually bid on a project, have it, it could come in wildly different. So that's why you're going to get competitive rates. If there is no competition, and you don't do an RFP at least once every 10 years, of course, prices are going to rise. There's nothing to keep them in check. Absolutely nothing.
I think maybe you have a. I think maybe you have a misconception of what an RFP would be, because an RFP-
Well, and that was the other-
Let me finish, let me finish. Because an RFP will not get you that exact amount that you need for each specific task, and, and maybe Paul can jump in here a little bit. An RFP gives you, and again, you'd have to look at an RFP to see what they generally include, but they're not going to give you, "Well, this, we're going to always have this engineer on task, and this is the price," because that engineer might be tied up sometime.
And I totally realize that.
So, what you're going to end up with is the ranges. You're going to end up with those ranges.
No, you, you can identify, you don't have to identify-
Well, since you've been doing this longer than me, I'm sure you know.
You don't have to identify the person that's going to do a task. You, you identify a position that's going to accomplish a task. And I have done a lot of our RFPs in my lifetime, and RFPs do not have to cost a lot of money. If you belong to an association of city administrators or city managers, there are RFP templates for city engineers around, I know, that you can just use, so, and modify, in a matter of hours. It doesn't have to cost an arm and a leg. So, I'm sorry, I, I think it can be done inexpensively, and I think we're going to get competitive rates. I'm not saying we have to change who we're using. It's going to make sure that the rates that we're paying are competitive, and without RFPs, there's nothing to keep those costs in check.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a couple of things. On the list that Mike did put together, I did not hear one city that did make a change that they changed because of the rates. So, to me, that indicates that generally, a city does change if they make a change because of dissatisfaction, dissatisfaction of the service or the quality. Can you give me, you're talking about rates. Can you give me a dollar value on what you would give the experience, the history, the good relationship, the trust, and the track of good service that you would have with somebody? How can you, would you be able to put a dollar value on that? Because you know what? As a business owner, too, those things are one of the most important things when I look at who I carry, whether it's competitive or not, the quality, and the experience, the history, those are really important to me as a business owner. How would you, in your rates, put these values into a dollar figure?
I agree that those things are important, and I'm saying that we don't have to give up the engineering firm that we're using.
If we're happy with what we have, why would we even search? I get the, the rate thing. We are getting competitive rates right now. It's on the sheet.
And I'm saying you can't compare them. You can't compare ranges.
We're comparing them right here, and it's impossible.
That's what an RFP would do, then. You would compare the rates, so why would we do an RFP if you can't compare the rates?
Not if you write an RFP to require specific amounts and not ranges of rates.
So, the RFP, how are you going to qualify the experience, history, and all the other incredible things that we get from the current services that we get right now?
Of course, you take that into consideration when you get the RFPs back, and it's the council's judgment to, to take that into consideration.
Maybe I could have Mr. Hornby weigh in a little bit. I'm sure he's quite familiar with engineering RFPs. I understand you've done a lot in your business, but it is quite different than city engineering. So, Mr. Hornby, can you maybe tell us a little bit about city RFPs for engineering services?
Well, each, each one is going to be, you know, there's going to be some commonalities, but each city's going to set the scope of services they want for their engineer as a consultant. Some of them don't want, there's a city that I worked with for almost a dozen years that didn't hold office hours. The only reason I'm not their engineer today is because I left the firm I was with, and I had a non-compete clause, and I couldn't go back to work for them, nor could I solicit work from them. So, but in that, but in that process, you would identify a scope of services, what you want. Do you want office hours? Do you want other coordination with staff? Do you want that person also assist in public works? Do you want them to assist in other areas of the city government? Do you want them there one day a week, two days a week? The way our current scope of services is, we provide time necessary, by the minimum of six hours a week in office. I can tell you, I spend more time in, in the city than that, in, in, you know, any month. You know, some days it might be only six hours. I might be on the road a lot more than that, but council meetings and so forth, and the time I spend in the office before a council meeting, you know, that all adds up. Do you want a retainer on a monthly basis? Do you want to pay by the hour? There are cities that do both. So, there's a lot of things to decipher. I know there's a city that was, they've changed that now, they've gone to a retainer basis, but they had an engineer on staff for, oh, it's got, it's more than 15 years, and they paid by the hour. So, they had that person in City Hall four days a week, and so, they paid hourly rate, had that engineer in the office a little time, but they were happy to do that. They got what they wanted from their services.
And so-
So, it varies by city. It's not just one template RFP that fits every city.
So, your, for instance, your rates are, are set. I mean, we, we know what we pay you.
So, WSB has one rate schedule-
Okay.
For a government service. That's what we have, is one rate schedule. We don't change it from one to another. If you want out for RFPs, you're going to get that same rate schedule. We're not going to change that. There are some firms that might change it. They might lower it artificially and hold it for five years, but then they'll turn it on and really raise them after that.
Mm-hmm.
And we've seen that time and time in the marketplace. And in my experience, I, this is the, well, I've been doing this for a lot of years, but this is my eighth place of employment. And most of that time, yeah, as an engineer has been as a consultant. And oftentimes, what ends up happening is, a city will make a change, or a government entity will make a change in their consulting engineer when there's some dissatisfaction. There are key things in the marketplace that hold pricing down. One of them's honesty, one of them's integrity. Yeah, we, we also have licensed, we're all licensed by the state of Minnesota, to be, also follow ethics. We have to get credits in ethics every two years, just like we have to get so many credits every two years. Ethics is a new one that was entered in here a few years ago. We take those kind of things very seriously. So, to be sitting on a project and billing time willy-nilly is not something we do. I don't, can't think of a consultant that does do that. So, I don't, I don't see where there's a, a question of what, what the rates are. There is a question, or an item brought up where you can have wildly different costs for a project depending on the people you put on, and billing toward the upper end. My experience has been, and I've been doing this for, been consulting for about 30 years, the, I can put a low-rate person on a project to lead the project, to design the project, and it's going to take longer to do it. So, you're still going to end up, for instance, I did a project for a very large city. They actually came and asked us to propose as a partner with another consultant, and so putting a proposal together, my average hourly rate, what they did is took the consulting fees, it's a very large project, divided by the number of hours, and they said, "Paul, your average rate is too high. It's $125 an hour." I was not with WSB at the time. And I said, "Well, what is your measure?" And he said, "Those are how we do things, and we have to have that under $100 an hour." And I said, "Well, I could put a lot younger staff on it. It'll take them longer to do it, so if I have more hours, but I can get that average rate down. That's what I want." Okay? Still got the job, still got the job done. It's just a change of personnel, but the fees were about the same. So, I don't think there's, I don't think there, for instance, on city Minatrista projects, the two larger ones you've just done, I'm not the engineer of record. I should, I should take that back. I'm the engineer of record on Enchanted Lane, but I'm not on Halsted Drive, mainly because I was a different project manager. That was Nick Williams.
Okay, and has he paid less, or lower?
He has a lower billing rate than I do, yes.
Okay.
And then Katie Kozlak, Chris Keller, Tim Cartoni, there's a number of people who worked on that project, Bill Alms, so.
And so, if, if we do a project, if we, let's just say, like Halsted, and we say, "Well, this is our engineering budget," can you look at that and say, "It's realistic, or it's not, or I could put somebody else on it," but, I mean, kind of like you did with that other, other city, and then we could pick and choose? I mean, is that something that, is that normal, or not, or what?
I would say that's not normal.
Okay. And why?
When, I, if I put a proposal together, if I name a specific person, as time goes on, and this happens, you may not have that person's availability for one reason, one reason or another, but I'll find somebody who can do the same job, whether at the same rate or a lower rate. Maybe the hours stretch out, but the goal is to try to keep that fee in, in check, you know, overall. And so, there, you know, there's some flexibility in those, I think, is from a consulting standpoint.
Okay.
But you do try to propose and keep to the staff that you propose for the project. But you generally don't, I should say that, you know, one of the things I think Council Member Bruce is looking at is, when WSB is smaller, and a lot of other firms that are smaller, will have a specific category, project manager, you know, fixed rate, senior project manager, fixed rate, principal, fixed rate. As firms get larger, they tend to have a number of people within that category, that all have different experience levels. Even though there's, they're categorized as project manager, they're all at different levels. So, you end up getting a range for that, for that-
Position.
For that position.
Mm-hmm.
One of the firms I worked with, who wanted to change their rate schedule, go over that one fixed fee, what you end up doing is going to that two-thirds point on that fee schedule, somewhere in there is where you set your rate. Okay, then as a consultant, you're trying to do is get as many of the lower billing people to work on that project, and hire people. But, you know, the fees are going to be about the same, either way.
I have a question. If the city were to do an RFP and require all respondents to provide specific rates for categories of positions that perform the work, would WSB respond to that RFP? Or are you saying you wouldn't?
Well, I would talk to our staff and see what they want, how they would handle that. And I guess I don't, I don't know exactly how you're phrasing that, but it sounds like you're saying, if we give a fixed fee for a position, are you going to meet that in, in a proposal?
Yeah, I don't even know if that would be in the best interest of the city, because we may have projects going on, and maybe we have two or three projects going on, and we may need a different person to fill that, that requirement, and it may or may not be the person that you're, you know, in that RFP, then we're kind of in a, in a bind.
But they would have all the people identified in the RFP that they could possibly use. And at the, at the end of the day, the point of all this is, one of the fundamentals of economics is that absent competition, prices rise. And when there is no competition, when we don't do RFPs, and we don't look for competitive rates, those prices are going to rise, and I think we owe it to our residents to make sure that we're, that we're not paying more than we have to.
I'd like an opportunity to speak, if I may, Madam Mayor, and then I'd also be interested in hearing what Council Member Monitor, Molitor has to say. As far as RFPs go, I'm in favor of going out for RFPs when we're required to do so. As a guiding organization for us as a city, and as the council for the city of Minatrista, the League of Minnesota's, League of Minnesota Cities does not require that we go out for bid on these kinds of services. So, you know, they, they have established the guidance there. Not other types of services, we're required to go out for bid, and my personal opinion is, I'm not really a fan of how the RF, the, the end result of receiving RFPs, because it's my understanding from getting clarification from our attorney, Ron Beatty, in a meeting that we are required to accept the lowest bid. Is that correct?
No, it's the lowest responsible. I mean, I, I think even, well, we've, we've gone out for RFPs on engineering the last few years.
I'm not talking engineering.
No, I'm talking anything.
I'm talking the road that we, we've got, took the cheapest bid-
We haven't always done that.
And we got crappy work, and we've been digging out of it, and we're still not done.
Well, I mean, now we're transitioning into something else, or whatever, so. But we don't, we don't have to take the, it's the lowest responsible bidder, and even with professional services.
And that, that's not exactly, okay, Mr. Biggerstaff.
If I could just jump in, just to answer that question. The, the difference is, a road project is subject to competitive bidding laws, so if it's over the $100,000 threshold, the city's required to accept a bid of the lowest responsible bidder, subject to a number of rules and exemptions. The, the point of Mike's slide is that professional services are exempted from that requirement.
That's a state law.
So, the city can enter into an agreement at an arm's length, they can do an RFP, and select whoever they want from the respondents.
Okay. Moving along, thank you for all that information. And as Council Member Martinson stated, I do think that the institutional knowledge and history is very important. Also, if we, if we weren't satisfied with the work that we were having done by the engineer or attorney, certainly, we would want to consider going out for RFP. My, so that's where I stand on that. My thought more, though, as we move on to, oh, and then you mentioned Council Member Bruce, as far as the engineer, or WSB proposing projects, and then doing the work. My recollection is that generally, any projects that they propose are ones that we've asked them to research and get back to us on. So, I don't think they're coming and just randomly suggesting that we do things. It's part of their responsibility, by working with our public works department, to stay abreast of what's going on in the city and, and what we need done. But on the topic of whether or not we should have an on-staff engineer, you know, something to consider, but I don't think that it would be cost-effective, because you don't get the depth and breadth of a whole engineering firm that has specialists in different areas that we draw upon, whether, whether it's a road project, or, or a water project, or, or whatever else there might be. So, and then, curious what Council Member Molitor has to say.
Just a couple of things. On the RFP part, I probably don't have anything to add. Everyone's kind of said their piece, and I don't know if I have anything to add to that. The other thing that was brought up, though, that you mentioned, was the splitting, and it's a little bit of what you just talked about, Patricia, the splitting of the roles, about doing the engineering versus the overseeing of the projects. That component, I don't believe would be addressed via an RFP.
No.
Okay. So, just if we can just set aside the RFP discussion for a minute, because I don't, whatever. But I don't know-
That relates to the staff engineering position.
Okay, so you, your thought on that would then be a staff engineer to do, to be, using Mike's term, traffic cop?
And I'm not advocating a staff engineer at this point. I'm not convinced that the time is right for us to do that right now.
I would, I would agree with that. But, so then, absent a city engineer, I don't know how we would split up the work to, to, to do that. I mean, you'd almost have to have one firm do, you'd almost have to re-RFP then for a couple of different things. You'd have to RFP for services for engineering, services for design, for oversight, and a couple of other things. So, that would potentially bring in multiple firms to do aspects of this?
I don't think you'd get multiple firms because of the liability issue. No firm is going to come in and say, "Okay, you engineer it, I'll oversee it," and then guess who's responsible for the work.
You'd have to do them on a project-by-project basis.
Yeah, I mean, there's-
So, I don't think we're going to get away from-
No, and I, I agree with that, and, and, I lost my train of thought.
Okay. Mr. Hornby, are you, no, can I say?
Well, I think, you know, it's kind of two separate things. I mean, the RFP, we can discuss it all night long, but I think that, if, what I'm going to use for a term here, probably lack, probably a better term, but the inherent conflict of interest, if you will, of running from end to end, I don't see us really getting around that without having a city engineer, and I don't think any of us have the flavor for that. So, I kind of want to take that piece, although it's a fairly concern. I get what you're saying, and I, you know, I also get what Paul was saying about, you know, honesty, integrity, and, and also the, the knowledge base about, if you know the whole city, you know end to end a little bit better for all those services. But I think we kind of have to take that piece and kind of set that aside, because I, I don't think we can really tackle that.
Well, and the train came back in, so, what I was going to say about that proposing and doing- So what I was gonna say about that proposing and doing feasibility studies and managing the project and doing the bidding, because our engineer does all that, that makes it even more important that we're getting competitive rates and that we're looking at that competitively, and that we have a competitive marketplace for them to function in, because of, because of inherent opportunities for conflict of interest.
But you're not suggesting the support clause?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hornby, you wanted to say something?
So the, and the council is probably aware of this as well, but we have a project that a developer is proposing, and they have some obligations to meet. And with that, we're gonna reconstruct Lotus Drive. We've been working with the Met Council for a few years now on another project, which they would be running a pipe, two pipes down Lotus Drive. Their plans were probably about 70% complete. Rather than have the developer have to step back and redesign the roadway with their engineer and have it constructed, it's already 70% complete, the suggestion was to have Met Council's engineer complete that. Now typically, on a developer project, we would have our staff, Matt or Joe, do the construction observation, construction representation on it. We still want to have some oversight, but frankly, the Met Council's engineers, the engineer of record who designed it, they should also do the engineering during construction, just like we did with SEH on the water treatment plants. You want to make sure you have, just so there's not a mis- a misinterpretation on plans, there's not something that goes awry on the construction side of it, that you can't work with in-house and get it fixed. And, and, so we generally would have the engineer of record do the surveying, the construction. Some things, you know, things change hands, things are interpreted differently, you can get somebody to stake something incorrectly, then try to resolve that among three consultants between preliminary design and construction. It's, it, it becomes more of a hassle than it's worth, to be honest.
Well, and like I said, if something goes wrong, then it's finger pointing at everybody else except, you know, and then it's whose responsibility, whose liability is it? That's, that's a huge issue.
So that's why we.
So if one, one engineering firm does the engineering, one engineering firm does the, the oversight, that's the engineering firm whom, who is held accountable.
So in this case, you would see a proposal from that engineering firm to also do the construction observation for that particular project. That'll be coming here in probably a month.
Right. And now I'm just, we're gonna wrap this up here. It sounds like there's.
Can I say one last?
No, I'm gonna say something. I'm gonna say something. I've got the floor. So it's, I'm just gonna say this, we're talking about competitive bidding, and if you go out for RFPs, these, these bids, these prices that we have here, that's how it's gonna come back. It's not gonna be a big surprise. It, that's what it would be. And you talk about getting exact amounts, and it's gonna be ranges. Every engineering firm that has the depth and breadth, such as WSB, Bolton &amp; Mankum, SEH, I mean, all of these are gonna be, they operate similar, they know what the other person charges, their fees are gonna be pretty much the same as, as the other guys. So with that, I will give you just a brief second to finish up what you wanted, like to say.
Yeah, I, I can see that there isn't an appetite to do an RFP here, and, but I believe the competition is good for the marketplace, and to vote not to do an RFP, I, I would like to, to make a motion to do an RFP. And if there's no second to that motion, that's fine, but I think that tells residents of Minatrista that this council doesn't believe that competition is good for the marketplace.
I disagree. That, that does not, one does not conclude to the other. No, not going for, I would say that every, every member of this council believes that competition is good.
Then how can you go 13 years without it?
'Cause you don't have to, and nobody else.
Well, not only that.
It doesn't change the outcome.
We have gone out for RFPs for engineering. We did the water treatment plants, we went out for RFPs, and we, we hired a different company other than WSB. So we.
Two other companies.
Uh, two other companies. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. So, we have gone out, and especially on larger projects, such as the water treatment plant, there's, does not to say that we couldn't or wouldn't do that. What we're talking about today, and what, what, what we're saying is, our in-house, if you will, our designated engineering firm, we would like it to remain to be WSB. If we wanna go out for RFPs for large projects, we can then take a look at it at that time, but I think we're all kinda saying, the pricing isn't gonna change, it's not gonna be a whole lot different, and that's what we've seen in the marketplace. So if you'd like to make a motion, go ahead, but it does not indicate that we're not concerned about, about what we're spending taxpayer dollars on. I take, I take issue with that, and that's offensive.
And I, I disagree.
Okay.
And we can leave it at that.
All right. So we will, I think there's a consensus from the council, if I'm hearing correctly, that we continue with the, with the WSB and Kennedy and Graven, that we don't go out for RFPs for new professional services, and we move on from here. So with that, we move on to persons to be heard, and there's nobody signed up. Our consent agenda items include for A, approve work session meeting minutes from February 5th, B is approve our regular meeting minutes from February 5th, 2018, C is a resolution to approve our claims, D is a resolution to approve change order number three for Lisle Park parking lot improvements, and E is a resolution to accept improvements and authorize final payment for Lisle Park parking lot improvements, F is a resolution to approve reimbursement resolution for budgeted 2018 equipment certificates, and G is to approve the Second Amendment to the subdivision agreement for Woodland Cove Third Edition with a 30-day extension. Are there any that you wish to remove? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five oh. Public hearings. So this is a public hearing that was continued from our last meeting, and it is for the vacation of a portion of Towns Edge Road within the ponds of Hunter's Crest. I don't see anybody here that wishes to address this concern to the council or make any comments, so I'm going to, at this time, close the public hearing. So the public hearing is officially closed, and I'll take it back to the council. Mr. Abel, do you need to add anything or wanna weigh in?
You covered most of it, Madam Mayor and council. This is, of course, for the Ponds of Hunter's Crest subdivision. We're vacating a portion of Towns Edge Road in order for them to go ahead and subdivide the property. There is a future agenda items right after this, involving the final plat, the subdivision agreement, and then actually the sale of a portion of Towns Edge Road that the city recently acquired through tax forfeiture. So this is, again, a continuation of the Minnesota statute public hearing notice that we posted for February 5th, and you just closed that hearing, so the recommended action is you adopt the resolution vacating a certain portion of Towns Edge Road within the property to be platted as the ponds at Hunter's Crest.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the vacation as Mr. Abel presented, stated?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Thol. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. So we move on to our business items. This is, item number one is a final plat of the ponds at Hunter's Crest, and, Mr. Abel?
Yes, thank you, again, Madam Mayor, members of council. So the, the new name, as you'll see in your staff report, which, which was, is still is Homestead Partners, they've created the SFP Minatrista LLC, is officially the applicant name now, and the property owner's name, and who the council would eventually be entered into a subdivision agreement with. As you recall, you approved a preliminary plat for 31 single-family residential lots out in the Hunter's Crest neighborhood area. That was towards the end of 2017. The applicant has submitted for final plat application, and staff has found that their final plat does conform with the regulations and requirements of the preliminary plat resolution that was approved by the council. We're looking tonight for the city councils to adopt a resolution that approves the final plat for the ponds of Hunter's Crest, subject to the terms and conditions as outlined in the resolution in your report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? We went through the preliminary plat, and if the applicant has met all of the requirements for the preliminary plat, as we indicated, we really should move forward with the final approval then. Any questions, Mr. Maliter? Okay. All right, so do we have approving the final plat of the ponds at Hunter's Crest with the staff conditions as outlined in our packet?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Thol to grant approval of the final plat of the ponds at Hunter's Crest with, outlined as, in our packet, with conditions as outlined in our packet. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And then we have execution of the subdivision agreement. Mr. Abel?
Thanks again, Madam Mayor and council. So as we do with any of our new subdivisions, we enter into a subdivision agreement with the, the applicant. What that does is set forth the rights and obligation of, of the parties, of the parties involved, and requires the developer to construct the public and private improvements that will help support that development, and this one being specifically the ponds of Hunter's Crest. So again, as with any of our subdivision agreements, there's no direct fiscal impact to the city as a result of this agreement. We do ask for a letter of credit to be submitted by the, the applicant, which covers the costs of those improvements, should anything unfortunately go wrong, and those need to be completed. So as with any of our standard subdivision agreements, you can see attached in the resolution, we are recommending that the council adopt the resolution, which approves, approves the subdivision agreement between the city of Minatrista and SFP Minatrista LLC for the plat of the ponds of Hunter's Crest. And again, I explained the, the name change there, in terms of why there's a different name there than you saw at the preliminary plat.
All right. Questions? All right. Then, are you in favor of approving the, the execution of the subdivision agreement between the city and SFP Minatrista?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So motion has been made and seconded to authorize the execution of a subdivision agreement between the city and SFP Minatrista. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. Next, we move on to the sale of city-owned property in Hunter's Crest to SFP. Mr. Abel, maybe you could explain this, it seems a little strange, but some of us, I'm not sure if two were on the council at this time or not, but.
I know a few of you were, yes, certainly. See, yes, this is a little unique situation, where we just vacated a portion of Towns Edge Road that's, that's considered public right-of-way. And what we have here is, and I'll pull up the aerial, that's highlighted there, excuse me, so that, that portion of Towns Edge Road was, was recently purchased by the city, because Hennepin County notified us that the property was going through tax forfeiture. It actually was originally part of the Hunter's Crest Third Edition, the subdivision that's located to the north of this. And during the, the, the market crash down, in, in 2008, when the, the subdivision basically went from the developer to the bank, there was remnant pieces that were, were left over. So this, this area was originally intended to be developed. Long story short, the, the developer went through tax forfeiture, the bank let, let it slip through as well, so the taxes weren't being paid. County took a look at the, the property, as well as others in the area, to see what, what was exactly there. In this case, we have a public city street on it, so they, they made notice to us and asked us as a city, are we interested in this piece of property, thinking we probably would be, because there is a, a city street there. So we, of course, said, yes, we're most certainly interested in the piece of property, 'cause there is Towns Edge Road in it. Talking with the county, there was a couple different methods in which we could acquire it. The simplest was us just going through and purchasing it. There was minimal costs with, with recording fee and everything, it was just, just shy of $200, it was $190-some dollars, to be exact. So what, what we're proposing to do as part of this subdivision, because it does need to be moved, we will be getting a new public street access on the Hunter's, Hunter's Trail. The, the simplest way in working with the city attorney would be doing a, a similar transaction that we did with the county, a quite claimed title, or a, a sales transaction would take place of, of $200, as outlined in the staff report. So again, just looking to recoup our costs that the city had in, in getting the parcel, so that we can then just transfer it over to the, the now developer and applicant. There's, a portion of this will actually be backyards of, of homes, a small portion. Majority of it, it's actually gonna be Stormwater Pond.
Stormwater Pond, yeah.
It's a majority of what, what it'll end up being. So obviously, it doesn't make sense for us, for us to keep it. We're, again, we're getting a new access to Hunter's Crest with a new improved city street. This is currently a gravel, gravel road access, so we're getting an improvement, most certainly. So looking, again, just to recoup our costs, and the resolution before you would authorize the mayor and clerk to go ahead and sign the, the transaction that would take place to, to transfer this over to the developer.
Any questions? I have a couple. So if we transfer this to the developer, and I don't have a problem with it per se, I just wanna make sure that we're covered, should something happen and the development not go through, I then wanna make sure that Towns Edge Road is still Towns Edge Road with public right-of-way.
Sure, certainly, Madam Mayor. That's, it's a valid point and something we've been, when talking with, with the city attorney. You know, we, we still have quite a bit of control. A lot of this will all take place when, when actual recording happens with, with documents and such, which, which we have control over. So we would certainly wanna make sure we're far enough along to make sure that things are put in place. We have letters of credit in, in hand, fees and such are in hand before we're gonna allow the actual recording of all these documents, which will actually solidify all of this taking place.
Okay, so if the development were not to go through, and so the documents are signed and the fees are, are accepted, but then, I mean, I know that this won't happen, but I'm, it happened in '08. Let's say it, the development goes belly up or whatever, what, so would we receive that portion back, or?
It depends on what, I mean, in your scenario, we would have a letter of credit in hand, and we, as a city, would step in and finish it. We'd, if at least.
Oh, I see. Okay, the infrastructure. Okay, all right.
So, you know, there's one property owner, the Lukey family, at the end. We, as a city, obviously wanna look out for their interests to make sure that they have access. So one way or another, they will get access.
Okay.
In, in that scenario, if it, you know, if something were to go wrong before they started, you know, we didn't have a letter of credit, we didn't have the fees, we wouldn't, we wouldn't record any of these documents, and it wouldn't be like it never happened.
Okay. Okay. Just making sure. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the sale of the city-owned property in Hunter's Crest to SFP Minatrista, and this would be specifically the parcel that is indicated in our packet.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. So that was, motion was by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Maliter. So next, we'll move on to administrative items, so we have staff reports. Mr. Barone?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I've got a few items to review with you. We've been, as most of the council knows, we've been in the process of doing labor negotiations, and we've, and I say we, I mean myself, Mr. Grimm, and Ms. Tabor, have been working with our elected officials on our personnel committee over the last number of months, as we go through our processes for each of our three labor unions. And I know, so I know the, the mayor and Councilmember Thol are well aware of our status and where we are process-wise and progress-wise on our labor negotiations. I did have a chance to speak with Ms. Mortensen last week and kinda gave her an update and flavor of where we're at, and I talked to both our remaining two city council members, and wish to meet with them on a one-on-one basis with Ms. Tabor and Mr. Grimm as well. and wish to meet with them on a one-on-one basis with Ms. Tabor and Mr. Grimm as well, if their schedule allows, but it would be for sure, myself with Ms. Bruce and Mr. Maliter. Already worked out a time with Ms. Bruce, I think we're going to meet on Friday at nine. And then with Mr. Maliter, we've got a couple of nights, and we can talk after this meeting to solidify which one. I do have a preference, but we can talk then. The whole point is, is that I want to ready the council for when we bring back the redlines, which are the proposed agreements that both sides have agreed to, and then, because, you know, it's an unusual process, labor negotiations in the public sector, and I, not that the labor negotiations are difficult, but it's just, you know, you need to understand kind of the ins and outs of why we offered, what we offered, what they're asking for, why we ended up with, what we ended up with. Just as a quick update, we met a week ago, Friday, not last Friday, the week before that, with our Public Works folks and gave them a proposal. We have not heard back. I updated that proposal on Friday to them by email, and they had kind of a busy night they ran at two this morning to plow. So even if they are interested in accepting our proposal, I don't think today was the day for them to talk about it as a group with their business agent. So we're waiting on them. We did get an agreement with our police officers. After meeting with them on Friday, we received, I received notification on Saturday or Sunday from our, from our police officer who's on the, represents them at the table, and they accepted our offer. They had tentative verbal acceptance from the business agent, the two members of the police officers that were there, but they had to take it back to their group, and they accepted it. We're still waiting on a response from our police supervisors on where we're at, so we're probably furthest behind in them, but I think we're getting close. So with that in mind, like I said, I wanted to ready the council for the redline and those kind of things. So we'll talk about getting you up to the end and kind of how we evolved to where we did with our offers. I will be on vacation starting Monday, next Monday, the 26th. I'll be gone two weeks. I think this is the first time we've ever taken a two-week vacation, so I'm looking forward to it. I'll be back in the office on Monday, March 12th, which does mean I will not be here at the Monday, March 5th city council meeting. You'll be in good hands with our department directors, they'll guide you through that. And then, one final item we do have, and Ms. Bruce and Ms. Whalen know this and will be participating, we do have a special mound fire commission meeting tomorrow. As Ms. Bruce mentioned, at the last meeting, Minnetoka Beach is, they want to change the price, as she mentioned, it's a zero-sum gain. If theirs goes down, ours goes up, but if they leave, ours goes up a little higher. So we have a, I guess, I didn't call it an emergency meeting, but I guess it is, so it's tomorrow, and we're going to talk about that, and we hope to have everybody there, at least some representation from all the member cities there, and so the three of us will be there representing Minatrista. Other than that, I think that's all I have, and I think we have a few other people that are going to talk next.
I need someone to attend the February 26 Planning Commission meeting. Anyone's interested?
I cannot, I have another meeting that night, so...
I don't think I can.
Uh-oh.
I can.
Okay.
Okay.
There will, as of right now, we are not having a parks commission meeting. We're still, there's still two pending applications that just haven't come to fruition. And the one other thing I have, so we are, we do have a redline version of our comprehensive plan based on the comments that we received from the Met Council and other outside agencies. So given the size of the document and the comments, what we'd like to do is, this week, what I'll be doing is sending all of you on the council a shared file that you can access it because it is a large document. So you could access the document. We'll have the other outside agency comment letters as a part of that, and probably just a summary of some of the changes that were made, along with the comp plan itself, the final version. It'll be a redline document showing the changes. So we'll send that to you this week, and looking then probably around a month or so to allow you time to read through that, look at it, and then we'll kind of either bring it back to a work session for discussion if we feel we need to, and then ultimately we'll have to have you adopt the final plan so we can send a clean final version back to the Met Council for review. And just, you know, bear in mind, Thol, we were one of the first to submit, so there are, you know, you're going to be scrutinized and looked at a little bit more than when they get in the heavy swing of things, so that's, you know, why we want to allow you some time. But also to remember that the changes that were made in the comments, I mean, these are per their comments made to us and their requirements. So keep that in mind as you review it and look through it. I mean, there may be some things we can talk about, but a lot of this is in reaction to the comments that were made to us. So there, again, though, you know, we want to give you a time to review it, and we'll be sending that out this week. And so hopefully, looking at probably that first meeting in April, maybe having a work session discussion if we feel it's necessary, and then potentially the second meeting in April, we'd officially bring it to you under the regular meeting for adoption. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Okay. If we disagree with what they recommend, does it go back to them and then come back to us, or?
Well, that's, that would, yeah, that would be what, how it would work, yeah. I mean, you'd send it back only to have them send it back and say that our comments are commented. Yes, mostly, you know, so it really is, it would take time and money, more money, you know, it'd take more time for us to go through that. There's been a lot of back and forth already, you know, on it to get to the point where we're at, so.
Well, let's look at it first.
And there's nothing, yeah, and it's nothing, this is a lot of technical stuff where, like I said, there's going to be a lot of red, but really, it's just little technical things that they were looking for. Nothing dra, you know, the framework and such isn't changed. So I don't, you know, to me, it's not that big of a deal.
Yeah. I think, you know, let's look at it first, and then also, as you're reading it, if you have questions, you can always direct them to David.
Yep.
But then, I think it would be good to bring it back to a work session so we can just hear everybody's questions or comments, too, so.
Sure.
Yep. Hopefully, that gives us enough time. If not, then we can bring it back to the second meeting in April, but I think staff would kind of like to get it off their plate, too, so.
Yep.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Ms. Tabor?
I have a couple of things, thank you. Just an update with our Public Works hiring process. We were able to narrow it down after two panels this last week to a candidate to bring for recommendation to the personnel committee, so we'll be looking to do that this week and then make a conditional offer, hopefully. And then our CSO, Ryan Farniak, who we approved for hire a few weeks back, he's passed all his backgrounding, as well as all of his drug testing, so he is scheduled to begin on the 27th, so we're looking forward to having him. A reminder that our State of the City address is Tuesday, February 27th. I did send all the council members just an invite as well on the calendar, if that made your life easier or not. So 6:30 to 7:30, and then from 6:30 to 7:00, we're going to do a coffee and cookie reception, which is something we did last year. We did that second last year, we're going to try that first this year. And then from 7:00 to 7:30 is the actual State of the City. Mayor Whalen will introduce any council members who are present, any staff that are present as well. So just know that that's there. If you have questions or anything, please feel free to let me know. And then this Saturday, I met with Megan Smith from The Laker. She is doing an article on our last council meeting in regards to the permanganate. So just a heads up that that's coming out, just a summary of what we talked about during our council meeting, and then she met with me just to do some follow-up questions, just to make sure that she had her accuracy piece there. So we did that this morning. And then finally, Mike Baroni is due for his review. He is completing a self-assessment this week. So just an overview, for those of you who are newer to this process, Mike will do a self-assessment, then what I will do early next week is I will send out an email with a couple of things. One, a timeline and directions. Two, the form that council members fill out for that review on their behalf. And then just kind of a longer timeline, sorry, a timeline not only just for your steps, but then bigger picture timeline for you as well. And then also, staff will do reviews as well, and then from there, we'll do a Personnel Committee meeting, and then we anticipate bringing that back mid-April, and I say mid-April because we just have a variety of council absences that are coming up that's just going to push us out a little bit. So just know that that's coming when I send that packet out to you, if you have any questions, concerns about timeline. Right now, what I have it set up as is getting that to you early next week and then having you return your reviews to me by the 9th, which is a Friday, March 9th. So it should give you two full weeks to do that. Just let me know if you're running into any issues as well. And I think that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes our staff reports. We'll move on to council, and we'll start with Ms. Bruce.
I went to the St. Bonnie Fire Commission meeting, and they've decided to change their meeting frequency to twice a year instead of four times a year. So that sort of takes away the conflict with Pioneer and Councilmember Mortensen was kind enough to cover that for me this time.
Okay, and then you'll be at the meeting tomorrow morning, I believe?
Yes, I'll be at that.
Okay, good. All right. Mr. Maliter?
The LMCD approved the request from Mound for transferring some of their slips to overnight parking rather than transient. So that should be happening. They also approved the Bayview Event Center's request for just the opposite, going from transient to overnight. And we just completed their executive director's performance evaluation as well, and those are kind of the big topics there.
Good, thank you.
I participated in the Personnel Committee meeting, as Mr. Baroni mentioned, on the labor negotiations. And then on a different topic, I just wanted, out of respect to the mayor and the council and the city staff, I wanted to update you on that, my, okay, geez, my, my husband Tim and I have decided that it's time for us to downsize, and so we are going to be putting our home on Loring Drive up for sale. And so I will keep you apprised of any developments there.
All right.
Congratulations.
All right. Ms. Mortenson?
My turn.
Yeah.
WCC meeting was on the 7th, and it was held at the Orno Police Department, and there's a lot of discussions. Spear of the Lakes is coming up, and we did, like we have in the past, sponsored it, so that will probably be coming up again in the near future. Last year, we did the Silver Level, which was $1,000. The parade is going to be later this year, it's going to be 1 o'clock, they thought it was going to be 1 o'clock, just due to traffic issues and so forth. Trista Day and State, oh, I suggested that we post Trista Day and State of the City on the WCC website, so I did pass that on to Cassandra. The presenter was Dustin Reeve, who is the new Orno City Administrator, and he did a very nice job. The city is focusing right now in Orno on the intersection of 15 and 19. So if you, yeah, it's bad. So they are working on things to resolve that, and it'll probably be a while, but they're working on it. Pioneer-Sir Creek Watershed meeting was on the 15th, and they had election of new officials. I did not nominate you for president. They did ask. I thought I might be in trouble if I said yes to that. There were no changes. They are stream monitoring Whale Tail, North and South, they did it for 2017, they're going to continue that for 2018. Lake monitoring, they discussed Oxy Oak, but they need an update on the volunteer situation.
Yeah, they always, the lady that used to do it, I think, no longer lives there, so I think we're sure to volunteer on Oxy Oak. So if there's anybody, if you know of anybody that lives on Oxy Oak that would be willing to volunteer to do the monitoring, let you, let Ms. Bruce know, so.
Yeah, so they probably will ask again at the next meeting, so.
Sure.
And then there was a couple other notes that I put together for Shannon for follow-up, with some policies and things like that. Then I had a meeting with Mike, Lisa, Cassandra on the 14th to talk about a recap of the League of Minnesota Cities Leadership Conference, some communication and crisis and community engagement things. So we are working on some thoughts and ideas on that as well. I think that's it.
Okay, great. So, yeah, Personnel Committee meeting, union negotiations continue, as Mr. Baroni and everybody else has reported on, so we're working on that. Met, yeah, that was a great, was a good meeting with Ms. Mortenson and staff regarding communications and community engagement. As you know, we're just trying to figure out any and all avenues for better and more frequent community engagement and also for better communications all around. So 15th of February, I attended the Drug Task Force luncheon with Mr. Baroni and also Chief Falls. Great event, thank you for inviting us, that was great. Then, of course, in the afternoon, right on into the Public Safety Meeting that we had with St. Bonnie, and that was our quarterly public safety meeting. And tomorrow, I'll be meeting with, regarding the mound fire committee. And then the Northwest League normally would have met on the 14th, but because of Valentine's Day, they decided to move it to this coming Wednesday, so I'll be attending that. And then, again, just please all attend the State of the City address, so, the 27th, and that's it. I have nothing else, and I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, so we can be adjourned if there is a motion to do so.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Maliter. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh.